We assemble across the road, outside Waitrose, under the canopy there. Can I ask everyone to switch telephones to mobiles to silent or off? And we'll move on. Members of the public say that as a committee we understand the matters under consideration can be rather emotive. However, please be respectful of those around you in the public gallery, the committee, and refrain from any booing, cheering, or any other form disturbance. I'd just make a quick comment, members. We've got a very long agenda, both southern and western, tonight, so I hope when you make your comments, you do it in one go and not return repeatedly. I'm not going to curtail discussion whatsoever. Let's make it a full and frank discussion on whatever item we're dealing with. So now moving on to the business. Members of the meeting that took place on the 1st of February have been on the table for the last thirty minutes. I'm content, I sign those as a true record of that meeting. Thank you. Apologies for absence. Amy?
Thank you, Chairman. Apologies from Councillors Adams, Hall, Inchboard, and My Honour.
Thank you very much indeed. councillor Hess is late. A declaration of interest. Amy?
None received before the meeting, Chairman.
councillor Round and councillor Piper.
Haysmere Town Council Planning Committee on which I sit, and I may change my mind. I forgot what My Honour has to say, as opposed to what we said there.
Thank you. Same again, councillor Piper?
Same again, but also I have a non-procurnary interest on agenda item 7.4, Oaklands view Three Courts Mount Road, in the fact that their neighbour is a very close friend of mine.
Noted. councillor Roberts?
Can I give the same notification of interest? And the neighbour on 7.4 is a fellow councillor on Haysmere Town Council, so, thank you.
And I declare the same interest. Thank you, councillor Round as well. Thank you.
I've had absolutely nothing to declare, just to make a change.
And councillor King. Amy, have there been any questions from the public?
No, thank you, Chairman. None received.
And telling Peter Cleveland, any relevant updates, government guidance, or legislation since last meeting? Peter?
No, Chairman. Thank you.
Yeah. For the benefit of the website, can I just introduce the officers sitting in front of me? Peter Cleveland, head of development control. Louise Jandle, who's senior planning officer and runs the southern area. Stephen Tester, arboretum officer. And then Rachel Callis, senior planning officer on the far side. Moving on then. Item six on the agenda, a tree preservation order at U Tree, Haysmere-Tilford Road. Stephen Tester, it's all yours if you'd like to brief members.
Thank you, Chairman, and councillors. The purpose of this presentation is to consider an objection to the making of a tree preservation order 1416, and to determine whether the order should be confirmed or not. The tree preservation order was made on the 28th of September in 2016 at the request of a tree owner, and it affords protection to one U Tree situated in the property Haysmere-Tilford Road, just within the circle there, and the green inner circle is the point of the tree. The order has been made in recognition of the tree's size, age, species, and contribution to the visual amenity and character of the landscape. The order is deemed appropriate due to perceived threat from potential disfiguring and inconsiderate lopping, which follows on from failure to agree a compromise over the extent of branch pruning works required to alleviate a new neighbour's concerns regarding growth over the adjacent boundary in Haysmere Pond, property just to the south. It was therefore deemed expedient to place a tree preservation order on the tree to safeguard it by exercising a level of control over future proposed works. An objection was received to the order during the statutory representation time by Mr Smith, the owner of Abbott's Pond Cottage-Tilford Road, situated due south, as I indicated. The objection was on the following four basis. The tree is not considered significant historical or arboretum cultural value. The tree possesses a potential risk to adjacent people and property. Alleged root damage to existing driveway and the cost and responsibilities of tree pruning. The tree officer, Andy Clout, responded to the concerns. However, unfortunately, no consensus could be determined, and it was deemed appropriate to bring it to the committee. In response to the four points, Andy Clout responded, "The U Tree is visible from Tilford Road far away and contributes positively to the character of the street scene. The tree has a stem circumference in excess of 1.4 girth, 1.4 metres girth, sorry, and a balanced crown with a radial branch spread of approximately nine metres. It is a large tree for a relatively slow-growing species, and its size equates significant age. The tree and landscape officer is aware of only one other U Tree such as this within the parish of Tilford." In response to the tree poses potential risk to adjacent people or property, the landscape officer responded, "The tree preservation order does not alter the duty of care owed to third parties by the tree owners, as laid out in the Occupies Liberty Acts. If adequate evidence was presented to the council, the trees presented unreasonable level of risk to people or property, then the council would not unreasonably refuse or withhold consent to remedial works." The tree officers had the tree, sorry, the tree owners had the tree inspected by a competent arboretum in 2016, and it was found then to be of fair form and condition. This was backed by the tree officers, myself, and Andy Clout. No accompanying information has been received by the objector to determine that there is any risk posed by the tree currently or possibly in the future. In regards to the root damage to the existing driveway of Abbott's Pond Cottage, it has suffered some cracking and damage to the tarmac surface, which may be partially attributed to root incursion from the U Tree and/or some fir trees which have recently been removed from the boundary. The driveway will require resurfacing in due course, in any event, as part of the property's ongoing refurbishment. In regards to the cost and responsibility for tree pruning, the officer of advice has been given on an appropriate specification and extent of pruning of short to short and low-trading branches above the driveways, and to reduce branch growth towards the dwellings. If I just show you that. And the right to appeal is maintained in the future to any refused tree works applications. The current clearance can be seen on the photo, which we felt was a not-unreasonable clearance level, separation clearance between the current tree form and the property itself. The costs associated with undertaking tree work are not altered by the protection afforded by an order. There is no onus on the tree owner to prune back branches overhanging the property's boundary, and if the neighbour wishes to prune back the tree, consent to an application for reasonable tree pruning in accordance with relevant recognised industry standards would not be unreasonably withheld. In closing, it is recommended by the officers that the tree preservation order 1416, applying to the U Tree on land at Haysmere-Tilford Road-Tilford, should be confirmed without modification. Thank you for your time, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much, councillor King.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Can I just ask for a point of clarification, please? On page 10, it talks about the tree having a girth of 4.5 metres, and I believe you said it was 1.4. There's a significant difference there, which would have a bearing on the age of the tree. Could you confirm which is the right figure, please?
Yes, of course. I noticed that in the report. I believe it was a typo by Andy Clout. I believe he meant, if he takes a holiday, I have liberties there. I believe he meant circumference, and the actual girth is 1.4, which was backed by the recent report done on the tree as part of a building application.
Members, any further comments? In that case, members moving to the recommendation on page 11. Those in favour of the TPO being confirmed without modification, please show.
That's unanimous.
Unanimous. Thank you very much indeed. Moving on then to item 7.1. Site inspection writing from any requests at this meeting will take place on the 28th of March, at a time to be agreed later. Moving on, 7.2. Applications which are open for public speaking. A1. Erection of WA 2016 1894 is the erection of two dwellings associated garaging and landscaping following demolition of existing dwelling, outbuildings, and other structure at land at Keepers Cottage, Farnham Road-Tilford, GU10. Two As. Louise, you're going to introduce this application to the committee, please.
Thank you, Chairman. The application site measures 1.9 hectares and is located on Farnham Road to the north of Tilford and the south of Runfold. The site is accessed by a single track leading from Farnham Road and comprises a mix of wooded areas and open grassland, along with residential property and associated outbuildings. A detached dwelling is located on the north-western corner of the site here, and it's surrounded by a significant number of associated outbuildings and areas of enclosure, together with areas of debris, including some machinery. All the outbuildings are considered lawful by the passage of time. The site is surrounded by a significant amount of woodland, in particular to the north, south, and to the west, and this area is characterised as ancient woodland. This slide shows the proposed plan. The application seeks the demolition of the existing detached dwelling, the existing outbuildings, and the removal of the associated debris in order to erect two five-bedroom units of a modern modular design. Unit two, which is situated here, would be dug into the sloping land levels. Each proposed unit would benefit from a detached garage and would feature green roofs. This slide shows the existing and proposed build plan. The red areas on the plan show the floor areas of the buildings which are proposed to be removed as part of the proposal, and that is the existing dwelling and all the associated outbuildings and enclosures. And the areas in blue show the proposed dwellings and associated garages. Unit one is proposed in the north-western corner of the site and comprises two storeys with a detached garage. The proposed unit would measure 33 metres in width by 31 metres, and then by 10.2 metres in height. So this is the north elevation, the south elevation, the east elevation, and the west. Unit one would comprise a five-bedroom house with a detached double garage. This is the ground floor plan and the first floor plan. Unit two is proposed in the southwestern corner of the site and comprises two storeys with a basement and an attached garage. The proposed unit would measure 34.5 metres in width by 23.4 metres in depth, and would have a height of 7.7 metres. This is the north elevation. As you can see, it's a similar design to the previous one that I showed you. And the south elevation, and the east elevation, and the west elevation. This is the lower ground floor plan, the ground floor plan, and the first floor plan. Again, this unit would comprise a five-bedroom house. Here are some existing site photographs. As previously described, there are a number of buildings on the site which are lawful, and these, well, a selection of these are shown on this slide, and again on this slide, and again here. These final photos show the existing dwelling, which is also proposed to be removed as part of the proposal. Moving to the determining issues. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of the development, the planning history and differences with the previous proposal, the lawful use of the land, noting that officers are satisfied that the development on the site represents the level of development that has existed for at least four years, and therefore consider the land and associated buildings to be in a lawful residential use. Highways and parking, noting that the highway authority have raised no objection to the proposal in this regard. The impact on archaeology, noting that the county's archaeologist is satisfied that subject to a safeguarding condition, the proposal would cause no harm to any disturbed archaeological remains. Impact on the SPAs, noting that due to the availability of alternative recreational opportunities within the area which could divert future residents of the development from the use of the SPAs, the proposal would have an unlikely significant effect on their integrity. And biodiversity, noting that Surrey Wildlife Trust have given careful and considered consideration of the proposal, and have judged that the circumstances existing in this case are sufficient to recommend an ecological assessment by condition prior to the commencement on the site, and also that the proposal would require an EPS licence, and the proposal would not result in harm to European protected species. In terms of what members are being asked to exercise their judgment on this evening are the impact on the green belt, taking into consideration that the land comprises previously developed land with an established residential use, and that the proposal would result in a significant reduction in footprint, floor area, and hard standing from the current lawful situation on the site. The location of the development, noting that whilst in an isolated position, the benefits of the proposal in terms of the effective use of previously developed land, the reduction in built form, and the removal of sporadic lawful buildings on the site would constitute special circumstances that need to be weighed into the planning balance. Landscape considerations and visual amenity, noting that the site's unique in that it is well-contained and therefore provides the opportunity for a more contemporary development that would be unseen from public vantage points. Amenity space and standard of accommodation, noting that both units would exceed the requirement government technical standards. And the impact on residential amenity, considering the significant separation distances and orientations between the proposed units and the existing dwellings surrounding the sites would prevent any harmful impacts to amenities of surrounding residents. The recommendation remains for approval as set out in the agenda report. Thank you, members, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Louise. Now move to the public speaking part of this procedure. So can I first of all introduce the objector, Simon Wilkinson, speak. He's got a six-minute speech, which is going to cram into four minutes. You have four minutes.
Trying my best. Thank you very much for your time. Today, there is one existing house built through local materials and in keeping with the area. There are some single-story outbuildings, however, most of the volume being claimed has not previously received planning permission. The land has green belt status and also area of outstanding natural beauty that only the one existing house should be replaced, so the application should therefore not be given permission on principle, as there is currently only one property on site. We, the local residents and neighbours, believe the proposed development constitutes inappropriate development in the green belt as mentioned in the national planning framework. This area has therefore the high status of protection with regards to the landscape, the beautiful scenery. To support this point, I refer to the MPPF paragraph 89, which states, "The government attaches great importance to green belts. The fundamental aim of the green belt policy is to prevent urban sprawl by keeping land permanently open. The essential characteristics of the green belts are their openness and also their permanence. The visual impact of the development and the proposed contemporary hard angular structures will harm the landscape and not protect the green belt or enhance it. These proposed dwellings will materially detract from the openness. The local plan clearly states requirement for any new development to be appropriate to the site in terms of scale, height, form, and appearance, and to be of design and materials which respect the local distinctiveness of the area, of which will be a positive contribution to the appearance of the area. The MPPF also states inappropriate development is by definition harmful to the green belt and should not be approved except in very special circumstances. Regarding to the design and development, the design of the development will impact the setting, local area, wildlife, flora, fauna by causing material harm to the setting. Planning policies and decisions should aim to ensure that the developments will function well and add to the overall quality of the area, respond to local character and history, and reflect the identity of local surroundings and materials. Regarding communication from the developer about the design, the MPPF states that the applicant will be expected to work closely with those directly affected by the proposals, to evolve designs that take into account the views of the community. The developer has not made any efforts to work closely with these neighbours, even though we have tried to make contact on several occasions by various means to discuss the application. Regarding building in the green belt, the developer used the footprint of the sheds and stables as well as the house to make up a very large volume for the proposed new houses. The sheds and stables that the developer has used to calculate the total capacity are not of permanent or substantial constructions. The sheds and stables are single-story, and most have not previously been given planning permission. Light pollution. The MPPF states that by encouraging good design, planning policies and decisions should limit the impact of light pollution from artificial light on local amenity, intrinsically dark landscapes, and nature and conservation. It is worth noting, Tilford is a designated dark village. These enormous houses with their large windows will pollute the natural dark skies that we have in a beautiful ancient woodland. All of the neighbours have signed petition. There are 25 local residents and neighbours that have signed petition. I have a map here with me that enclosed the entire area. There are 38 objectors currently and 27 supporters. The objectors are locals and local neighbours; the supporters are generally linked to the development business, or friends of the applicant. Just a couple more points to make, if I may.
Very quickly, if you would, sir.
Fictitious claims about previous uses of the land. As neighbours, we have not seen evidence of these claims, especially the car mechanic's garage business. There have been paperwork in the applicant's application stating that 35 to 40 car movements have occurred down the driveway daily. We didn't actually see Mr Lowe for the first two and a half years of being there. Land denuded of landscape, this was not the case before the developer purchased the land. However, the developer has cut down trees protected by TPO and taken away topsoil from the paddocks, making them denude. The recent history of the site clearly is completely irrelevant. One doesn't correct the recent pass of the building.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Please, I must ask you to come to an order. So now can I invite the parish council councillor Nigel Rolfe to speak, please? I think you know the system councillor, Rolfe? The big button, the big button, big black button.
Parish councillors from the Western villages' parishes have a growing concern that Waverley Borough Council and its planning department do not heed the views of parish councils, nor indeed CPRE. I'm hoping today will not present yet another case study. Tilford PC is unanimously against the recommendation by your planning department on this application. We fully endorse the report to you by councillor Adams on each argument presented. We hope that you follow his advice. Despite comments following an early visit, the developer has made no attempt to alter the overall appearance of the design. The proposed provision of executive housing boxes on a site which is ideal for equestrian use in a locality of high equestrian demand is totally unsuitable. The parish council described this proposal as stacked containers with windows cut in them. The appearance is non-compliant to the environment in which it will be placed. Mr Adams expresses concern about reflected sunlight. Of even greater concern is illumination at night from considerable amounts of fenestration. Tilford prides itself in being a dark sky environment, which would be further diminished by this development. Having taken no notice of our concerns regarding design appearance, the developer has already destroyed trees included within a tree preservation order, including at least one oak which was second recognised as being a habitat for bats. There has been no enforcement action. Of great concern is that this site is the subject of an existing outstanding appeal involving the proposal for three housing units. I find it incredulous that the planning department have undermined their own position in that appeal by ignoring the arguments that they have presented in that case, which frankly apply identically to this current application for two units. One, increased urbanisation that would have an unacceptable impact on the openness of the green belt, i.e. inappropriate green belt development. Two, there are no special circumstances that can be argued to permit deviation away from your council's stated policy to preserve and protect the green belt. Three, there are no special circumstances to permit the increase from one habitable unit to two. Whilst it might be perceived as a minor increase, the fact is that any such increase will contravene Waverley and national existing policy. Four, the existing usage is a single unimproved habitable unit with ramshackle outbuildings constructed without planning consent to house dogs and indeed monkeys. It makes a mockery to suggest that such erections can be included to assist in the calculation of floor area. Five, the proposed scheme will double the amount of habitable units, creating an urbanising effect detrimental to the existing landscape character of AGLV and AONB, and the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside, thereby failing to comply with Waverley local planning policies D1, D4, and C3, and paragraph 17 and 115 of the MPPF. Six, there is a clamour against this proposal, your local borough councillor, the parish council unanimously, and adjacent neighbours. Supporters are largely from that part of the architectural community that supports this type of modernist development, but not from local affected persons. Seven, protected species under the Wildlife and Countryside Act may be significantly harmed as a result of the development, particularly in the light of tree-cutting activity already undertaken by the developer, showing a degree of disregard already, and thus in conflict with Waverley local plan policy D5 and paragraph 118 of the MPPF. Tilford Parish Council consider there is absolutely no justification for your planning department's recommendation to grant consent, and request that councillors support the views of the parish council, your borough councillor Brian Adams, and those of neighbours to the property, and confirm refusal of this application. Thank you.
And councillor Rolfe. Members, it's open to you. I do beg your pardon, Mr Graham Bell. I do beg your pardon.
First of all, I apologise if some of you went on a site visit and were not met by us. We heard nothing about it, so if you had to clamber over walls, I'm very sorry about This is a site with history, and it needs a new chapter in its life. So what did we do? We worked hard with your officers, that's what we do. And we tried to make an unacceptable scheme of three into an acceptable scheme of two, and that's what's before you tonight, and the officers have found it acceptable. When you consider the neighbours, please look at your layout plan which you have in your pack with you. Your page 18 will show where these neighbours are and how far away these houses are from where the site development is proposed. These are buildings of quality and high architectural design. They've been fitted in to create a horizontal development where there is a setting of strong verticality from the tree plantation, and some of the drawings have shown that. If you went on site, you've seen how this site fits within a cleared cutting within the plantation. And I think your pages 22 and 23 help you with that in your report. I would say, regrettably, it will be largely invisible to the public, because they won't actually see this. And I think it's got architecture that's worse seen in its setting. However, it's largely invisible from any public, any public path, road, or indeed, I would say, from the neighbours when you look at that drawing of how would say from the neighbours when you look at that drawing of how far away they are. There are natural beauty enhancements if you consider all the structures that are going to be removed and replaced by landscaping, these buildings with their green roofs. Overhead lines have been removed as well, which I don't think you, you were informed of, but that's fine. Just imagine that all overhead lines are removed as well. And most importantly then, at the end of all of that, it meets the green belt weighing exercise, which I know as a committee you carry out a lot of the time, and you, and you have to. And that, that weighing exercise appears on page fifty four of your report, and I'm quite satisfied that the weighing exercise has been carried out correctly and that there is also an enhancement of the AONB. So yes, members, there are some letters of support on this one, and there are letters of objection as well, so you can weigh either side of that. There have been reductions in volume, footprint, um, sorry, there have been reductions in footprint, floor area and hard standing from the existing structures and buildings on site. There is a small volume we were asked to keep to no more than ten percent increase in volume, and that's the scheme that you have before you. You also have that this site is confirmed as a previously developed site, and therefore in principle it can be redeveloped. There is a significant reduction from the scheme that, you never saw the scheme before you, of the three because it didn't come to committee, but there are considerable differences between the two applications, and that was dealt with, with, with the planning officer. There are no technical objections, as your planning officer has told you, to the scheme. In other words, it could go ahead without any other problems in relation to your consultants who advise you on, on those applications. So in conclusion, in my opinion, and it is mine of course, I don't think there's anything that you've heard that sways you away from your officer recommendation on this. It's been weighed carefully and there are no amenity issues before you and no technical matters either. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Bell. Now, members, I open it up to you. And councillor Hess, I'm sorry you'll not be able to take part in this debate. Yeah, noted. Members, yeah. Councillor Coburn, you have a question?
I always hold back at something because I feel, you know, that I'm the sort of incomer, as it were, and I was hoping somebody else, but I just really would like to clarify what the parish councillor said in relation to the previous refusal and the one that's had appealed for three. And whether or not, what the councillor said is absolutely true, that a lot of what was said in the refusal applies to two dwellings, or I'm asking the question, does it apply to the two dwellings as much as it applied? If you all look on page thirty two where the, it is written down, you'll see the, you know, what was refused for the three dwellings, with which, you know, you do talk about the harm to the, to the green belt and special circumstances. So I just really would like that clarified if possible, please. Thank you.
Okay, firstly, the scheme for free dwellings, both this dwelling and this dwelling were both larger, and there was also a further dwelling proposed in this location here. If I take you back to the aerial, this area here is free from development at the moment, and officers were of the view, were of the view that this area of land was not previously developed, and as such, the scheme did not fall within one of the exceptions within green belt policy, well, which this scheme we, officers consider does, which is the development of previously developed land. That was not the case with this one. In addition, the two dwellings that remain have been reduced in scale, bulk and mass from both the previous scheme that was refused and during the course of this application. And as you will see from the green belt section in the report, there has been a reduction in comparison with the existing footprint, floor area and hard standing, that is reduced. Whereas with the previous scheme, we did not feel that it was directly comparable to what was there already, and as such, there was a further harm to openness as a result of that. Moving on to reason for refusal number two, which was the impact on the AGLV and AONB, this was similar in that we felt that any dwelling here in the area that is free from development at present would harm that, you know, the character of the AONB and the AGLV, and that was not appropriate. And so that has changed from the previous scheme. Moving to reason for refusal three, Surrey Wildlife Trust objected to the previous application, but for this application, they are satisfied that the proposal would not cause harm to protected species, and as such, officers consider that that reason for refusal is no longer relevant. Moving finally to reason for refusal number four, which is in relation to the new isolated homes in the countryside. The previous scheme was for free dwellings, so it did result in an additional two dwellings which would be isolated. This scheme does result in an additional dwelling which is considered to be isolated, but for the purposes of paragraph fifty five of the MPPF. However, in weighing up the benefits of the scheme against that, what officers considered to be the one adverse impact to remain, in particular the removal of the lawful buildings which are particularly unsightly on the site, and the redevelopment of previously developed land which the government is focused on directing development to, it was considered that that adverse impact was outweighed by those benefits. So there is still, we still consider it to be isolated, but the other benefits of the scheme are considered to outweigh that particular harm. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Do you want to come back? No. Councillor Rand.
Thank you, chairman. May I ask the officer a question? The, you refer to page thirty two, the opposite page contains footprints, measurements and so forth, and it refers, compares the proposed scheme to the refused scheme. My first question is, is the proposed scheme significantly less in terms of footprint and floor area than the existing buildings, assuming all these shacks can be turned buildings? And my second question is, I must say, yesterday I thought I'd never seen such a cluttered site and anything would improve it, but I'm in two minds now. If this application is refused, are, is the council empowered to direct the owner to remove all the clutter? Or is it by dint of having been there for some years, now legally present? In which case, one wonders if the cost of removing it would forever condemn this site to being unsalable? Anyway, those are my questions, the floor space and the ability we may or may not have to direct the owner to remove the outbuildings.
Louise?
Okay, if I answer your first question first, if I can refer you to page thirty seven of the agenda report, this is the green belt section where we really assess the proposal against its acceptability in terms of the openness of the green belt. As you'll see from the table, there is quite a substantial reduction in footprint of all the buildings of just over twenty seven percent, reduction in floor area of just over six percent, and a reduction in hard standing of just over thirty seven percent. You will note there is actually an increase in volume of ten percent. However, for the purposes of openness in terms of the green belt, you have to factor in all those considerations, and overall, given the substantial reductions in footprint, floor area and hard standing, officers are satisfied that the proposal would have a less harmful impact on openness than the present situation. And turning to your second question, which is in relation to the, whether we could require them to remove the outbuildings, the short answer is no. They were erected on site without planning permission. However, we are satisfied that through the passage of time, and we've checked the aerial photographs and, and various history that we've got on the site, that those buildings have all been there for a period in excess of four years, by which point they do become lawful and they are immune from enforcement action. So those buildings will remain on site unless the owner chooses, chooses to remove them themselves. There is no control of the council to require that.
Thank you, Louise. Councillor Edwards.
Thank you, chairman. Just to clarify a couple of things here, the, the site's been bought, it's not going to be left with all those horrible buildings on it, it's going to clear it. So there's no, whatever happens, that's going to be cleared, whether they build one, two, three, four, five, six houses, whatever, it will be cleared, it's a valuable site and it needs sorting out. And if necessary, we, we at Waverley Borough Council should look at enforcing the appropriate measures to ensure that site is cleared, because it's a legal development in the, in the first instance, and we failed as a borough council to clear the site. Now, what I'd like to go back to and say, if this site is clear now, if it was a beautiful site, would you be allowing these two houses to be built on that site? And the answer is no.
Louise?
Yeah, you're quite correct. If the, if those buildings weren't on site, then the development would fail the tests in terms of green belt and also in terms of isolated homes, but that is not the lawful position that we are dealing with here. Those buildings, unfortunately, they have been there for such a period of time that they are now lawful, and that is the on-site position that we must take into consideration as a starting point for this application. But no, if it was an undeveloped site, the recommendation would be completely different.
Can I carry on? Sorry, sorry, I've got a number of issues here. The, um, I, I heard a phrase mentioned by the supporter of this application I've never heard before, I've been here ten years, and it says, strong verticality. That's amazing. All, all the lines on these buildings are vertical and horizontal, and it, I mean, they're like, you know, it's, it's like some, they're very similar to houses I've visited in Esher, actually, but that's in the main settlement. They look very, very similar, and they're very expensive houses, very nice inside, but not in Tilford. It's in the middle of the countryside here, it's a beautiful area, and it's inappropriate development in the countryside. It's green belt, it's got all the designations you could require, it's wilderness spa and everything else, and how we can possibly support this, I do not understand. I really feel very, very surprised, that's all I can say. And I, I fully support councillor Adams's view, and I just wish he was here, but there you go. Thank you.
Councillor King.
Thank you very much, chairman. I'd actually like to ask a question, please, about the trees. Somebody said earlier, and I think it's in the report somewhere, that the trees on this land are covered by a TPO, and yet Surrey Wildlife Trust in their comments have said that the proposal would result in felling and works to a significant number of trees. There's much made about the oak tree that died and fell down, that's, that's life, that's what happens. But are all these trees covered by a TPO, or is there a proposal to chop them down? Like an answer to that question somewhere along the way. Meanwhile, I actually can't really agree with my colleague councillor Edwards. I think these houses are refreshing. It's wonderful to see some modern contemporary architecture creeping into Waverley, and I welcome it. However, they are very substantial properties, and if I were buying one of those, that picture there, sitting there right now, I don't think I'd actually want a house stuck next door to me. I think I would like to see one house on this site and not two, but I await the officer's response to the trees, please.
There are some felling of trees on the site, but these aren't subject to the tree preservation order. There has been one that has fallen, as you, as you said, that was subject to the tree preservation order, that oak tree.
Thank you. If I can just quickly come back. Are you satisfied that the removal of the non-TPO trees will not have a significant impact on the site? At the moment, it's very well wooded, it's very well hidden. Is it going to open the site up to, to more visibility from outside the site as a removal to be removing the trees?
I don't know if you can see from this plan, but there are some trees that are sort of in between the buildings. None of them offer a significant degree of visual amenity in comparison to the trees which surround the site in the woodland. None of those would be affected by the proposal, and in fact, the built form that is proposed is actually further away from, from those woodland areas than, than the proposal.
Thank you very much. Councillor Piper.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. I have to agree and disagree with my colleagues in certain aspects. I agree with councillor King that I think that if you are going to have a building of this style, which I don't personally disagree, doesn't, I think it looks a bit like some stacked containers at Southampton Docks, but that's just my personal information, uh, position. But I do think that it, you know, if you're going to have such a modern design as that, one building for the site would be better. I am more worried about the future in the, the land, the open land to the right of the site, if you look at the, the map on the, the eastern side, I would hate to see that, you know, developed because I, you know, it could be that this is the thin end of the wedge. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I was one of the members who went on the site visit. Had I not done that, I might have had slightly different thoughts. In fact, like councillor King, I actually like the design in the right place, I like hoof houses in the right place. I remember this puppy farm and other things that were going on there that were most distasteful. Things have moved on, and we are now faced with other things. What you members might not be aware is that last September, oh, last June, July time, a great deal of topsoil was removed from the area. Photographs were taken by the neighbours. Unfortunately, this was not passed to us with enforcement action. That I find sad, because I'd have thought everyone would have been out to protect the, the screen's gone. Everyone would have been out to protect the green belt and AGLV and everything else, and the scenery that is represented there. We know that there is development allowed here. I think the two houses simply are too much, and I would like to see the same sort of restrictions that were applied to the three that the officers refused. I don't really see any change in that. It's a great pity that the neighbours didn't notice all the building that was going on. I mean, the puppy farm part of it behind the house was abominable, it really was. But it was there, it is a legal entity after four years, that is sad, but it's sad that we also didn't have the necessary information to take enforcement action. I think that is quite sad. We did on certain aspects of the puppy farm, and then events took over, didn't they, some years ago? But we won't go into that little matter now. So had I not been on the site visit and seen the beauty of the area, I would have had a slightly different idea of the outcome. So at the moment, I find the two very large, I think, beautiful houses simply too much. Anywhere, anyone else? Or councillor Rand, just quickly?
Very briefly, I entirely agree with your assessment.
Thank you. Okay, fine, that, we can do that at the vote. Officers, do you wish to make any further comment at this time? No? So members, moving to the recommendation, there's a subject conditions one to twenty four, informants one to fifteen on pages fifty five, six, eighty, the agenda, permission be granted. May I have those in favour of permission to grant, please show. Those against? Thank you. Can I have an alternative proposal? Can I have an alternative proposal and the reasons? Counselor Rand.
Taking the points many of us have made, I think we should propose that permission will be considered for one building.
You can't do that. We go to a recommendation to refuse and then I need a second. Counselor King, I think is seconding. Thank you. And then we need the reasons, please, for... Counselor Cooper.
I think the reasons really are based on the same reasons that we used last time. Obviously, there has been a slight change in the amount of building, but I think, you know, the urbanisation, the unacceptable scale, I think all of that still applies. And I think a modified version of what we said on page 32 would cover most of what we've said. It is overdevelopment, it is urbanisation on this site. And that, you know, leave it at that, I mean, we can't really say what we would like on this site, we can only refuse what's offered.
Peter Cleveland.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to clarify that there's a number of reasons on page 32. I think from your discussion and debate, reason two seems to highlight the specific concerns. And I just wanted to clarify that the members are wanting to look to apply a reason for refusal which relates to harmful character of the area and impact on openness of the Green Belt, bearing in mind the assessment that officers have made. So I think reason two there is clear from debate, but I want to just be clear whether you'd think that there's a harm on the openness of the Green Belt. But I would advise you to take account of this assessment in terms of volumes that we've taken account of further in your reports. I'll just ask for some guidance on that before we give you some specific wording.
Counselor King.
Thank you very much. I agree with the officer entirely, but I do think it would be useful to still use part of the reason, reason one, the proposal by reason of its unacceptable scale and bulk on the development, I think needed to be added somewhere. Please.
Chairman? So I'd suggest we take that wording of, so that we combine it into reason two and it would be something, the proposal by reason of its unacceptable scale, position, bulk and form would have a harmful impact on the character of the site and the surrounding area by reason of its urbanising effect and spread of built form. As such, it would fail to satisfactorily conserve the landscape character of the AGLV and AOMB and the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside. Proposal is therefore contrary to policies D1, D4 and C3 of the local plan in paragraph 17 and 115 of the MPPF. So that combines it into one reason for refusal and takes that previous openness of the Green Belt away. But I'll be guided by members on that. Thank you, Chairman.
Is it also against Para 89 of the MPPF?
Well, Para 89 deals with the Green Belt and the openness and that was the point I was asking for a steer on whether you want to include that or not. Thank you, Chairman.
Counselor Kevin.
What about the isolated dwelling? Because we are, although it's reduced in number, it would still constitute a new isolated dwelling, wouldn't it?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, that was a matter that we put into the balance, so members feel that that's overriding and hasn't been outweighed by the other circumstances. Recommend that wording remains as a reason for refusal for. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Edwards.
Sorry, are we mentioning anything about the design of the building? You know, I think Counselor Rand has mentioned something about the vernacular, building vernacular. I think, I think one thing I would like to emphasise is the effect it has in terms of potentially allowing other buildings of this nature to be built. We can't set a precedent here. I think it's a really difficult thing to put on paper, I know, but anyway, okay.
Again, I think this is personal choice and I would vote against that one or direct against it, advise against it. So, members, have we got enough reasons there? Yes, do we want the, to clarify, just clarify the isolated dwelling situation, are we happy with that?
Chairman, if it's helpful, I could read both reasons just for clarity.
Please, if you would, I think we've moved around a bit, sorry.
So the first one would be a modified version of what is listed as two, but this would be reason for refusal, one. The proposal by reason of its unacceptable scale, bulk and form would have a harmful impact on the character of the site and the surrounding area by reason of its urbanising impact and spread of built form. As such, it would fail to satisfactorily conserve the landscape character of the AGLV and AOMB and the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside. Proposal therefore failed to comply with policies D1, D4 and C3 of the Waverley Local Plan and paragraph 17 and 115 of the MPPF. That's your first reason. And then the second reason would be as set out on as reason four. Proposal would amount to an unsustainable form of development as it would constitute two new isolated dwellings in the countryside. Two new isolated dwellings in the countryside where no special circumstance has been justified. I actually think, apologies, I should have picked this up before, because there's an existing building there, so a like-for-like replacement would just be one. So I think we should refer to one additional unit in the countryside. So apologies for not making that clear.
Thank you very much indeed. Is that clear, members?
Thank you, Chairman.
Therefore, can I take the recommendation that permission be refused on the conditions we've just stated? Those in favour of refusal, please show.
That's unanimous, Chairman.
Unanimous. Thank you very much indeed. We move on, members. Yes, here we go. Item B1, change of use from agricultural equestrian barn to residential along with associated alteration to reeds wood, the reeds, Tilford GU10 to DN. And this is, Chairman? Rachel, sorry, I'm reading from the wrong piece of paper, I do apologise.
No problem, thank you, Chairman. Oh, sorry. Just outline for you here, the location plan. You've got two coloured lines, red line is denoting for you Lee, application site. Site lies to the south of Lurie's Road and has access from a private drive leading through roads from the reeds road, which also serves the reeds wood as well as Lee existing building. Here you'll see a close, a sort of close-up view, an aerial photo where you'll see this is the building subject of the application just here. And you'll note the access just here. Turning to the proposed site layout plan, you'll see it here. The proposal is for the change of use and conversion of the existing agricultural and equestrian building, that's in yellow for you here on screen, to a two-bedroom dwelling of an integral garage. The proposal also includes a change of use of the existing equestrian land to residential curtilage. Primarily, that's this garden area proposed alongside the dwelling of barn as it is now. Lee's Ali existing building elevations. As previously noted, it's currently, current lawful use is for agricultural and equestrian purposes. You can see that again here on Lee floor plans. Turning now to the proposed building elevations, you'll see that in terms of sort of the scale, size of the building, not a lot of change, but you'll see the addition of windows and various openings to facilitate that conversion to a residential property. Here you'll see the proposed building floor plans. That's the ground floor you'll see here, you'll note the integral garage. And moving to the first floor here, you'll note that it would be a two-bedroom property. Take you through a few existing photographs of the site now. This is the adjacent building you can see just here. And on the top right, you can actually see the left-hand side of the barn to be converted. You can get some sort of wider views here looking from just outside the application building. And some better photos just here of the elevations of the building to be converted. Turning now to existing site photographs, top right you'll see the existing access that would be utilised and bottom left is looking out towards the existing paddock. I'll take you now through the determining issues for this application. Lee matters of principle and technical opinion are, Lee, principle of development, housing land supply, impact on the Green Belt, highway safety and parking, effect on the SPAs and SAC and biodiversity. Lee matters of judgment in this case are the impact on visual amenity and landscape character, the standard of accommodation, the impact on residential amenity and any very special circumstances. I'll just draw on a few points here which you'll largely see from the conclusion in your report. Primarily, it is that the conversion of Lee existing building into a residential building would be an acceptable reuse of an existing building in respect of Green Belt policy. Having regard to its scale, form and design within its context where there is surrounding residential development currently, it is considered that the proposal wouldn't cause material harm in terms of the landscape character and impact on the AOMB, AGLV, albeit there would be some additional lighting resulting from the development. The report doesn't identify any other harm in terms of visual residential amenities of the area. The change of use of the land for residential curtilage is considered to have been appropriately justified in line with Green Belt policy. At this point, I'll now take you on to the update sheet for this item. You'll note there's one additional letter representation that's been received. That is commenting on Lee existing use of the building, raising concern actually of the original intentions when that building was built, whether indeed that was intended for use or storage of horses or indeed if it's ever been used for equestrian or agricultural use. Just to respond to that, you'll note the officer's comment says that officers are satisfied that the lawful use of the site is to be for the agricultural equestrian use for the reasons set out. The above letter doesn't alter that conclusion, giving no substantiated evidence to the contrary. However, notwithstanding that point, the reuse and adaptation of a building such as proposed is, would be acceptable in line with policy RD7 of the local plan 2002 and Green Belt policy. Taking that into account, I'd now turn you to the recommendation. That remains as set out for you on page 91 of the agenda, which is that permission be granted subject to the conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rachel. I'm now on the right page of my agendas, so I do apologise for that one. Members, open discussion to you. Counselor Edwards.
Thank you. Can I ask you, that building there, the barn, has it ever been used for agricultural use? And why would it have such a high roof if it was going to be used for agricultural use? It appears to me, and I may be being oversuspicious here, that it was built with the intention of putting in a floor there. So I'm not happy about this. I think that, you know, we're short-circuiting in the planning system and it's supposed to be ancillary to the main house. I know somebody's son is going to live there or a relation of some sort, but that doesn't mean anything. Once it's in situ, it can be sold off. And I'm against this proposal on the grounds that it's inappropriate development. And one other thing, if this is, if permission is granted on this house, this conversion, do we get the S106 money that we would get for a new home? Can I ask that?
First of all, if I can just answer the first part of your question in relation to the first floor in the building, that is currently a, well, it's a storage area. If you turn to page 72, oh, in fact, Rachel has brought it up on the screen for you. In relation to the second part of your question, which is in relation to section 106 contributions, section 106 contributions are no longer payable on schemes which are of less than 11 units. They're only payable on 10 or more, sorry, on more than 10 residential units. So for one unit, we wouldn't collect section 106 contributions.
I think an equestrian building, as this was designed to be, you'd call it the hayloft, wouldn't you? That's where you will store hay and straw for the horses. I certainly agree with one comment you made that this should be made ancillary to the main building, to the, to the house itself. And while one can't restrict any further development, I think the tractor store or whatever, and machinery store, we should look very carefully should a further application come forward for that. Counselor King.
Yeah, I wasn't going to say anything, I have to say. However, you've just sparked something off that crossed my mind. On page 70, where you've got the aerial photograph, the barn has a very strong synergy in its, in the area with the building next door. And I, I think if it were occupied as ancillary to the main property, I probably have no objection to it. But I think if the plan is to have a separate property, I would be somewhat concerned about the amenities available to anyone who lived there. So I'm still a bit divided on this one.
Louise.
If we can just come back on the ancillary point, this application is for the use of the building as a self-contained residential dwelling. So it would not be reasonable to require it to be ancillary as that is not what they have applied for.
Peter Cleveland.
Sorry, just to add further to that. I mean, Rachel has outlined it already, but there's a clear policy that allow this form of development. We have to be guided by what those policies say. We, we see a lot of form of development, conversion of agricultural or equestrian type buildings to residential and policy allows that in that form. So we do need to be guided and follow that in terms of decision-making. And in terms of the point about it needing to be ancillary, if I could just ask, just to go to the block plan on the screen, you can clearly see that that, that would allow appropriate amenity space as an independent dwelling for occupants that aren't, and it doesn't need to be ancillary. So I just wanted to make those points as well. Thank you, Chairman.
Counselor Edwards, do you want to come back briefly?
Very, very quickly, Chairman, thank you. This has been up for about five years or something, somebody was saying. And, you know, this is a short-circuiting, you know, planning system. I, you know, anyway, that's my only point.
I think...
The only, thank you, Chairman, the only point I would add to that, it has got planning permission, it's a lawful building, the policy doesn't say that way, it's for us to assess it against that criteria of policy. It doesn't say as restrictive a year as it has to be established for so many years, it's just a conversion of a lawful building into a residential use can be found acceptable and it complies with the relevant amenity, amenity matters. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. I think probably no further comments. Can we move to the recommendation, which is on page 91? Subject condition 1 to 9, informative 1 to 6, on pages 91 to 95 of the agenda, permission be granted. Those in favour, please show.
That's four, Chairman.
Those against? Permission granted. Thank you very much indeed. Moving on to item B2, WA 2016, 2417, erection and extensions, alterations at Oakland, view 3, Quartz Mount Road, Hesmer, GU27, 2PR. Louise.
Thank you, Chairman. And this site is located on the southern side of Quartz Mount Road. The site is occupied by a single-storey bungalow which is located in an elevated position above the road. Land levels rise steeply to the south and west and the surrounding area is residential in character. This photograph shows the relationship between the property, which is here, and number 1 Quartz Mount Road, which is here. You can see the top of their building there and their amenity space is in this location here. You can also see the significant change in land levels between the application sites, with the application site here located at... with the application site here located at a higher land level than one Quartzmount Road, which is down at this level. And the property at number one Quartzmount Road is considered to positively contribute to the character of the conservation area. This second photograph shows the relationship between the application site and number five Quartzmount Road, which is again positioned at a higher land level than the application site here. Number five Quartzmount Road is again considered to positively contribute to the character of the conservation area and appears as a prominent feature in the street scene above the application property. This photograph shows the rear of the application property. And this photograph shows the eastern elevation of the property and the boundary which runs along here with number one Quartzmount Road and the properties which front Sandrock. The amenity, sorry, the amenity areas which are associated with those properties are located immediately adjacent to the boundary, which is here. This final photograph is taken from the amenity space in number one Quartzmount Road. The application property is located here. You can see the single-story shed addition, which is currently on the property there, and then the main building, which is just beyond that. You can also gain an understanding of the changes in land levels from this photograph, as this would be the ground floor level of the application site. This slide shows the existing plans and elevations. As you can see, the current building is unassuming in form. And these are the proposed plans. And the bungalow would be increased in height from two point one to four point one metres. The porch canopy would be positioned on the front of the, of front elevation, this would have a maximum height of three point two metres. And then there is also a single-story side addition, which would have a height of five point one metres. The first floor is entirely located above the existing bungalow. And these are the proposed elevations. And two dormers would be positioned on the rear elevation and a large glazed dormer positioned on the front elevation. The council's historic buildings officer has raised concern with the suburban design of the building, particularly of the front dormer, which he considers would be out of character with the conservation area. The historic buildings officer has also raised concern with the increase in height, which would result in the currently unassuming bungalow increasing in presence between one and five Quartzmount Road, both of which contribute positively to the conservation area. In his expert view, the proposal would lead to less than substantial harm to the conservation area and would fail to preserve the character of the conservation area. This is the block plan. As I discussed previously, the first floor is located entirely above the existing footprint of the existing building. The single-story canopy is at the front. And then there is a single-story side extension, which is positioned here on the boundary of number one Quartzmount Road here, and number three Sandrock here. Officers raised concern with regards to the impact of the extensions on the amenity space of number one Quartzmount Road. This is the property's main amenity space here. You should note that the block plan is slightly incorrect, as this property has been extended around the corner there, and there's built form there with the amenity space just here on the boundary. The single-story side extension, which is positioned here, would appear significant in height in relation to this property due to the significant changes in hand, land levels as they rise from number one Quartzmount Road to the application site. And in conclusion, the site would be acceptable in relation to trees, the impact on the SPAs, highway safety and parking and biodiversity. But officers consider that the proposal would have an unacceptable impact on the adjoining occupiers at number one Quartzmount Road by reason of overbearing form and overshadowing, and that the proposal would harm the conservation area and fail to preserve its character. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development, the impact on trees, the impact on the SPAs, highway safety and parking and biodiversity. And the matters for members' judgment are the impact on visual amenity and the character of the conservation area and the impact on residential amenity. The recommendation remains as set out in the agenda report, and that is for refusal for the two reasons explained. Thank you, members, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Louise. Members? councillor King?
Thank you very much indeed. You've only got to look at the plan on page ninety-nine, and never I see a property shoehorned in way above its capabilities on the site. That's one. I entirely agree with the officers. I think it's out of keeping with the conservation area and the area. One of the points I noticed that was in the list was parking. Parking, as you probably all found out yesterday, is absolutely dire up there. And I entirely agree and support the officers' recommendation.
Thank you. Make the same sort of comment. The conservation officer and the historic buildings officer, I think, have got, and the officers' report have got it exactly right. It's when we went down the road to look up at the elevation that you saw what the conservation officer was getting at. And I was grateful the officers actually took us down there and said, look at that. This is too much in a very small space. If they want to extend, they can do it rearwards. Parking is still a problem, a massive problem. So I move on. Can we move straight to the recommendation, members? Which is excuse me, on page? One one five, thank you. The permission be refused for the reasons stated and the informatives on one one five, one one six. Those in favour of refusal, please show.
I think that's six. I don't know, councillor Round is in, no.
Those against?
One.
Okay. Permission is refused. Moving on to B three, erection of WA twenty sixteen, two three nine four, three dwellings and six garage stores following demolition of the existing garage and carport associated at Quinet's Chert Road, Chert, GU ten two NU. This again is Rachel.
Thank you very much. I'll start by talking you through the location plan. You'll see the application site outlined in red just here, and a slightly shaded green area is the existing garages subject of this application. The wider site itself, it's located on the eastern side of Chert Road, within a village of Chert, and comprised of sloping land, which contains a single-story building comprising seven black timber garages and stores. It forms part of the wider site, Quinet's Eddie Stone Court, which is made up of a collection of bungalows of varying styles and size, styles and sizes, as well as a sixteenth-century barn. Buildings are surrounded by communal gardens, car parking and garaging, and all accessed by a private drive leading from Chert Road to a communal parking area. That's the access just here. You'll see a similar point here on the aerial view, just zoomed in a bit closer. So arrow here denotes for you the garages subject to this application, and you can just make out as well the access, which just comes around just here. This building here is a barn previously mentioned. And you can also note from the photograph, the sort of generous communal open space there is which serves the properties. Taking you through a few site photographs now, on the top left, you'll see this little barn, which you're looking straight ahead at it. And on the left-hand side, the garages themselves. You'll note the single-story nature and sort of difference in height between that and the barn itself. A similar view on the bottom right, again, you'll see the front elevations of those garages. This now shows you, the top left is the access coming down into the site. And you'll see existing visitor parking, which sort of runs along that access down into the site. The garages, you can't see them on this photo, are just to the left of the view you see here. Turning to the bottom right-hand side of the screen now, you'll just see the rear view of that garage building and how it's sort of set into the land levels there, gives you an idea of the topography of the site. And you can see its height in relation to the barn building just here. Turning now through the plans themselves, you'll see here the proposed site plan. Permission is sought for the demolition of the existing seven garages and carports, and the construction of six new garages with three one-bedroom flats over, over and above those. Blue circle there just, just draws your attention to that building to which it relates. There'll be three one-bedroom flats, each of a total floor area of around a hundred and twenty-five square metres. You'll see each of them are served by their own garden here. And this would be the sort of the front of the flats and the main access there. The garages themselves accessed separately from the sides in that main courtyard area you see just here. Turning now to the existing floor plans, you'll see you've sort of got seven bays, which comprise a combination of garages and storage space there. Existing bins compound, that would be moved to the other side of the access road to facilitate the proposal. Turning to the proposed floor plans now, you'll see the garages would be a two, the proposed building would be a two-story building accommodating garages at the bottom and the three flats proposed on top. Turning to the elevations, you'll see here the, the single-story, the existing elevations and the proposed elevations. This will be the view from the front, where you'd access the garages, albeit the rear for the actual flats themselves. And this would be the main entrance on that higher ground level point to enter into the three proposed flats. You can see here, obviously, a comparison, you'll see the height of the existing barn next door and note that difference in height from existing. And similarly, again, these section plans hopefully give you a better understanding of the change in levels. On the left-hand side, this is the existing garage building, and you can have a marking point of the barn next door for a point of comparison. That would be increased in height, as you see on the right-hand side of the screen just here. Turning now to the matter, the determining issues for this application, start by taking you through the matters of principle and technical opinion. Those are the principle of development, the location of development, impact on the green belt, housing land supply and highway safety and parking. Turning to the matters of judgment, they are the impact on the AOMB and AGLV, the impact on visual amenity, residential amenity, and the standard of accommodation and amenity place space to be provided. Just drawing a few points, which are, you'll note from the conclusion as well. The proposal would compromise sort of limited infilling within a village of Chert on previously developed land. Be well-related in sort of scale and location to the existing development on the site and amounts of limited infilling within, within a village and to be of an appropriate design, in officers' opinion. There would be no sort of adverse landscape impacts, and the proposed residential units would, would make a small contribution to the housing land supply in the borough and provide a good standard of accommodation, having regard to the size and provision of amenity space for all those units. The recommendation is set out on page ninety-four of the agenda, and that is that permission be granted subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rachel. Members, any comments? councillor O'Boards?
Thank you, chairman. Just a quick one. It's a very nice development, this. I've been on there a couple of times. Are the officers happy that this is in keeping with the rest of the development? Because it is quite picturesque in its own way. It's got its own style. And that's my, that's my only query, really. And, and the other thing is, would there be any loss of car parking for the other, other properties on the development?
Rachel?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I'd just take you to some elevations might be useful, the proposed dwelling at this point. You'll see it's increasing in height, but it would sort of retain its own individual character, having the black timber as is there with the existing garage. So instead of providing a nice contrast, really, and not really just detracting away from the existing buildings, which, as you know, are visually attractive, as you correctly note. So yes, we are satisfied on, on that point. Turning to the car parking now, just go back to the layout plan. So it's going to be useful to sort of clarify that the garages there at the moment are sort of let out to residents around the unit, and they wouldn't be directly related to the three flats. So again, would be available to rent by which, whoever, whichever occupiers use them. It's worth noting that car ownership across the site is very low. But in any event, the proposal does also provide free parking spaces to the front here, which would directly meet the standards for those dwellings. And across the site as a whole, there would still be provision in excess of the council's car parking guidelines. So we're satisfied on, on that matter. Thank you.
councillor Heath?
Thank you, mister chairman. Yeah, I quite like the, the look of this, it's turned into a very nice little community. One question. If I've missed it, apologies, but is there anything in the conditions that would restrict work in the roof space, specifically putting in dormant windows or anything like that? Because that would really have an impact on the look of the, the thing in the future.
Rachel?
Thank you, yes. I, if I could turn your attention to condition nine, first of all. That has got restrictions which prevent, in classes A and B, so that's preventing any enlargement to the dwellings, so you can't have really any increase of space there. The other point I just note is it's not a substantial roof which we're adding here. It's got quite a shallow pitch, actually, the opportunities for expanding in that direction are fairly limited in any event. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, I think we move to the recommendation. Recommendation is permission be granted, subject to the conditions on pages one, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and the informative on one thirty-eight, one thirteen-nine, one forty. Permission be granted. Can those in favour, please show? Unanimous? Thank you very much indeed. Moving on rapidly to B four WA twenty sixteen, two four five four, erection of a single-story extension following demolition of the existing detached carport store, as a many buy it, at Rose Cottage, Rams Nest, Petworth Road, Chillingfold. Louise?
Thank you, chairman. The site is located on the western side of Petworth Road and is occupied by a two-story dwelling with a detached carport, which is there. The surrounding area is rural in character. These two photographs show the existing property here, and then the detached carport, which is located there next to the property. The carport would be demolished, which is shown by the hashed area on this plan, and replaced with a single-story side and side extension. This, as you can see, the extension would be located further from the boundary than the existing carport. The extension would have a width of four point four and a depth of five point four metres. It'd be single-story in form with a height of four point four metres. Officers are satisfied that the extension is in keeping with the character of the existing cottage. In conclusion, the proposal would be a proportionate addition to the dwelling in relation to the green belt, and as such, to be acceptable green belt development. It would have an acceptable design and an acceptable impact on the AOMB and AGLV. The proposal would also have an acceptable impact on neighbouring occupiers, trees, parking and highways and biodiversity. And taking members through the matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development, the impact on the green belt, the impact on off-site trees, parking and highways and biodiversity. And the matters for members' judgment are the impact on visual amenity, the impact on the character of the AOMB and AGLV, and the impact on residential amenity. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Louise. Members, any comments? Or do we move straight to the recommendation? Because I can assure you, today the person is a member of staff, tomorrow she is not. Therefore, it would have been dealt with by officers under delegated powers. So can I move to the recommendation? Page one five three, permission be granted, subject to the conditions on there and the informative on one five four. Those in favour, please show. Unanimous? Thank you very much indeed. That concludes our meeting. Thank you all very much indeed.